Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Special city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to take the roll call.
Bowring? Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosrav?
Here.
Malaki?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Patchkey?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our special city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite our Finance Director, Rita Cruz, to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Director Cruz. Our items of business are brief yet critical. Item 2A is to consider Ordinance 2025-02, providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing general obligation bonds to the voters of the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois, at the consolidated election to be held on the first day of April 2025.
Second.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Bowring. Comments from the council. Oh, Ms. Dawkins, please, excuse me.
Sure. So, over the last several months, the city has engaged the community to help determine a path forward to improve city facilities. Data are gathered during the various phases through online surveys, telephone surveys, community focus groups, and a community committee supports moving forward with a bonding referendum ballot question for the April 1st consolidated election. For your consideration this evening, is the ordinance setting forth that question to issue up to $68 million in bonds to improve the city's public safety facilities. Such improvements to include but not be limited to the construction of a new police station, the construction of a new fire station number two, improvements to the existing public safety facilities, and public safety-related improvements to the city's public works facility. So, in the last day, to consider an ordinance for the ballot for April 1st is this evening. And then, as this potential bond issuance does not address all needed improvements, work will continue on seeking alternative funding mechanisms to support improvements to the remaining facilities. And then, again, we talked a little bit last week. This is just getting the question on the ballot. Should the council approve this this evening, then we would start an education process to inform the public what the plans are, where they might be located, the size they might be, and all of those things would come next. So, with that, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from the deans. Ms. Vernari, kindly take the roll call.
Aye.
Sorry, aye. Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrav?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 11 votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, zero council members absent, Ordinance 2025-02 has been approved by this city council. Item 2B, our annual presentation regarding the fiscal year 2026 budget and fiscal year 2027 budget projections. Ms. Dawkins is going to join us at the podium. I will offer a brief pre-enforcement, that we ask all questions to be postponed until after the presentation is made. And with that, City Administrator Dawkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. One moment. Okay. Thank you, and good evening. Again, for those watching who don't know me, I'm Stephanie Dawkins, City Administrator for the City of Geneva. Also, along with city administrator role, I'm considered the Budget Officer for the city. So, tonight's presentation is an overview of the recommended fiscal year 2026 budget and a forecast of the 2027 budget, as a general overview for the city council and the public. We recognize that you may have some very specific questions based upon your review of the information contained in this evening's agenda packet, but first, we wanted to provide some context to the numbers. I would note that, for the most part, I will only reference the fiscal year 2026 budget, but the fiscal year 2027 forecast is contained within the documents that were in the packet for tonight's meeting that is available on the city's website. As the mayor stated, we respectfully request that you save general questions for the end of the presentation and submit more specific questions for a more thorough response, as we will discuss later. I would also note, you may have noticed, in the packet, we had a couple PDFs, but we also had a link to the new online interactive budget, so that's actually been in place for the last year, but this is the first year that we're presenting the budget through that mechanism. So, I'd like to begin by taking a look back over the last year through the use of numbers, for it is with this knowledge that we are better equipped to plan for the future. So, on the next eight slides, we've categorized them by the updated strategic goals outlined in the Geneva 2030 Strategic Plan, as adopted by this city council on September 30th, 2024. So, the first strategic goal is strong governance. The city is proactive and transparent in its communication and management. Priorities are clearly communicated, and a combination of community needs, desires, and legal requirements drives work. The city strives to innovate, collaborate, and engage the public and intergovernmental partners. Desired outcomes of this strategic goal include implementation of the strategic plan, enhanced financial resiliency, and facilities meet community needs. So, over the past year, the city once again received three Government Finance Officer Association Awards for the city's financial reporting program, distinguished budget, and popular annual financial report. In addition, we maintained our AA1 bond rating. The property tax levy rate is estimated to decrease by more than 7% per tax levy year 2024, and we invested nearly $500,000 in our facilities through capital improvement and maintenance projects, which included the replacement of the roof at Fire Station Number One and a restorative coating and skylight replacement for the roof at the Public Works Facility. We will also realize nearly $4.2 million in capacity charge savings over this next year due to the performance of the Geneva Generation Facility during the summer of The second strategic goal is inform and engage residents. The city is committed to effective and deliberate community engagement to promote meaningful connections that enhance public trust. Communications are at the root of a broadly shared belief that decisions are intended to enhance livability, equity, and the resilience of the community. Desired outcomes include reliable communications that foster public trust, effectively engage the community, and the city maintains a user-friendly website that serves residents and customers. So, as you can see on the slide, the city has many Facebook fans, X or Twitter followers, Instagram followers, and YouTube video views. We also had more than 630,000 visitors to our website, which translates into 1.78 million page views, with the most visits to the pages of the Newsflash, the Alert Center, and utility payments. We fulfilled 464 Freedom of Information requests. We held 28 public hearings. The police and fire departments also worked with the Geneva Park District to present the Risk Watch Program to nearly 70 children ages five to seven, who learned how to look for potential hazards, how to prevent them, and steps to take in the event of an emergency through fun and thought-provoking activities. And I would note, I'm going quickly, I'm not highlighting all the numbers, but all of this information will be on the city's website tomorrow. The next strategic goal is purposeful growth and economic vitality. The city provides for growth and reinvestment while preserving its sense of place and creating reasonable expectations of change. The city offers an environment where businesses succeed and prosper. Programs, policies, and partnerships drive the growth of a diverse tax base and long-term financial sustainability. Desired outcomes include a thriving downtown, a diverse and resilient economy, and the city attracts new investment and redevelopment. Over the past year, the city realized a retail occupancy rate of 94.1%. We welcomed 44 new businesses and supported 22 special events. Through leveraging the American Rescue Plan Act funds of over $950,000, the city entered into 15 redevelopment incentive agreements. The 2021 additions of the International Building Code, the existing building code, the residential code, mechanical code, property maintenance code, fuel/gas code, energy conservation code, swimming pool and spa code, and fire code, and the 2015 addition of the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code, and the 2023 addition of the NFPA 70 National Electric Code and the Illinois Plumbing Code were adopted, ensuring that the city's regulations are state-of-the-art, provide more flexibility for existing and historic buildings, respond to constituents' concerns, eliminate conflicts and outdated provisions, and we also eliminated 75% of local amendments, keeping the city current and competitive. We had 717 code compliance contacts over the last year, and you can also see we had over 3,000 inspections, and then the various planning and zoning and historic preservation cases that were considered. Safe, active, and welcoming community. Residents and visitors feel welcome, comfortable, and safe while enjoying the activities of daily living. All residents are able to fully access city services, provide input on policy, and feel a sense of belonging. Desired outcomes include housing choices available for all individuals, a sense of belonging for all, and safe and connected bike and pedestrian routes. Over the past year, the social workers' presence at the police department was increased from one day to two days. Three police officers and a police sergeant were awarded life-saving medals. Traffic stops increased by 1,700. The fire department maintained our ISO Class II rating. 37,500 square feet of sidewalks were replaced, and 2.55 miles of new bike and pavement markings were completed. Not to mention, the city hired its first engagement and inclusion analyst. Environmental stewardship. The city strives to be a model city and steward of resources for the benefit of current and future generations. A sustainable Geneva recognizes the environmental health and human well-being are interconnected and prioritizes a healthy environment through policies and solutions that reflect best practices and social responsibility. Desired outcomes include a healthy and vibrant tree canopy, city operations reflect respect for the environment, and residents actively work with the city to conserve resources. Unfortunately, this past year, there were three major storm events. However, in our time of adversity, 14 different agencies came to the assistance with tree and brush removal to the tune of 400 cubic yards of debris. 61 new trees were planted, and over 3,000 trees were trimmed. Our crews repaired 33 water main breaks and replaced 42 lead service lines. In addition, over $1,200 billion gallons of wastewater was treated. Quality infrastructure and services. The city works collaboratively and cost-effectively to deliver exceptional service while it invests in, maintains, and improves its assets. The city leverages technology to streamline service delivery and create capacity for staff to focus on impactful assignments. In delivering exceptional service, the city strengthens the community and its reputation as a professional and innovative organization. Desired outcomes include the provision of consistent and reliable services, being an employer of choice, and having dependable infrastructure. Over the last year, we had 15 employees celebrating milestone anniversaries, which we defined as greater than 20 years of service, and we celebrate those at five-year intervals. In fact, one of the individuals in this room, our Chief of Police, celebrated 30 years this past year. We also celebrated the retirement of four employees who had a combined service of 99 years. Forty recruitment, hiring, promotion, and onboarding processes were completed, with 18 full-time employees hired, and the city now employs four full-time staff per 1,000 residents. And recently, over 70% of our employees completed a half-day, highly-interactive customer service refresher training. In regards to public safety, the police department currently has 38 sworn personnel. This is the first time the department has been fully staffed in over 20 years. Police and fire personnel participated in nearly 25,000 hours of training and responded to over 15,000 calls for service. Thirty-five certifications were earned from the Office of the State Fire Marshal, and the first-due fire total response time decreased from 7 minutes and 18 seconds to 6 minutes and 55 seconds. As it relates to public works, over 18,000 feet of underground cable was installed to maintain the quality of our electric service. An electric customer in Geneva could expect to experience a service interruption of .643 times last year compared to the national average of one. The average length of an outage last year was 83.17 minutes. 1,200 fleet repairs were made, and 225 tons of asphalt was patched. 9,350 lineal feet of curbs were replaced, and 6.55 lane miles were paved. We had 508 hours of snow plowing with 1,205 tons of salt used, which is down from 1,500 used in 2023 due to our smart-sulting policies and procedures. And hopefully, that hours of snow plowing decreases. We don't have any, not encouraging that. So, if the past is any indication, then the future continues to look bright. Let's review what a municipal budget is, the process, the schedule, and take a glimpse at the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. So, what is a municipal budget? This seems like a basic question, and it is. It is also important to recognize, as many of you have heard me state previously, that the budget is a planning document. Many often mistakenly believe that the budget is a forecast of the amount the local government expects to spend. While that may be true, the reality is that the budget is the maximum amount that is allowed to be spent, absent an approved amendment. Further, pursuant to state statute, the municipal budget must be a balanced budget. That means that the estimated revenues are the same or greater than planned expenditures. So, this slide here is an infographic outlining our budget process. Although the budget is passed in a moment of time, it is really an ongoing exercise that does not end once the budget has been adopted. So, if you start in the upper left-hand corner, we have strategic planning, so that's the framework that provides how we allocate resources and guide our policy decisions. You move over to operational planning, so the departments determine and distinguish between needs and wants. Then we get to the budget, which is where we are this evening, and then throughout the year, we report and provide feedback and revise plans or revise the budget as is necessary. There are various roles and responsibilities associated with the creation, preparation, and adoption of the budget. The Budget Officer, myself, recommends a budget based upon strong governance principles, the general operational and capital needs of the city, and ensures that the recommended budget is balanced. The city council has the sole authority by a majority vote to adopt the annual budget. And since the budget is a planning document, and ultimately, things can and do change, the city council also has the authority to amend the budget by a 2/3 vote. So, the budget process began in earnest in November of 2024 with a strategic planning workshop. This workshop is conducted with the city council, the chair from the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, and the senior management team. It is during this workshop that the strategic plan priorities are identified by the city council and the SPAC chair for the upcoming fiscal year. So, on the next two slides are the priorities identified for fiscal year 2026. It is important to note that although the desired outcome in the strategic plan may not have been prioritized for the upcoming fiscal year, those outcomes remain in the plan, and action items associated with those outcomes are included in the budget as resources allow. So, the Tier 1 priority objectives that came out of the strategic planning workshop are strong governance 3, which was the facilities meet the community needs, and the second one was quality infrastructure and services 3, which is dependable infrastructure. The Tier 2 priority objectives, which are, there were three of them, purposeful growth and economic vitality 3, which is the city attracts new investment and redevelopment, safe, active, and welcoming community number 1, housing choices available for all individuals, and purposeful growth and economic vitality 2, a diverse and resilient economy. And again, I would note, the strategic plan is on the city's website, so anybody who wants more information about the plan or how these fit into the plan, I would suggest that you go there to get more information. So, tonight, we're at the CC review, or the City Council Review Phase of the budget process. Throughout the month of January, there will be opportunities for questions and feedback culminating with the public hearing on February 3rd, 2025. The budget presented for your review and consideration is the culmination of many meetings, discussions, and planning with staff and council to ensure that we meet the needs of the future and the priorities identified. So, now, I'm going to go over the major funds that comprise the fiscal year '26 budget. So, we have the general fund. The city council should be proud of the work they have accomplished over the past several years. The city is on solid financial footing based upon decisions and actions taken by the council. The AA1 bond credit rating from Moody's and recognition by the Government Finance Officers Association for the city's efforts in budgeting and financial reporting is evidence of this. The general fund projections, based upon year-end estimates and the fiscal year '26 proposed budget, indicates that the city will maintain a fund balance of approximately 55%, exceeding the goal of at least 90 days' operating expenditures and compliance with the city's financial policies. The city continues to be in a position to make significant investments in facilities, equipment, and infrastructure. The slide in front of you provides a summary of the general fund. The revenues are on the left, are budgeted relatively flat compared to the fiscal year '25 budget. In addition, we are currently forecasting that revenues will remain flat in fiscal year '27. On the right, you have the expenditures that are broken out by function as opposed to department. This is intentional, as it takes all departments to make a city run effectively and efficiently. As you can see, public safety accounts for the largest piece of the pie. So, again, if you look at the sources of revenue, our top sources of revenue for the general fund are the property tax, sales tax, and then you have kind of everything else, but then you have state income tax, non-home rule sales tax, and then it also shows the grants that we anticipate or have been received for this fiscal year. And then, again, on the right are the expenditures by function, public safety, general government, and public works. I would note that the public works number excludes any of the utilities, so that's not, there's no electric or wastewater, that's your streets and fleets, engineering, and So, this slide represents all expenditures accounted for in the general fund by category: personnel, contractual, commodities, and other. Other is essentially everything else that's not mentioned in the other three categories. And then, the percentages across the bottom of the screen indicate what percentage of the general fund expenditures are from which category. So, for example, 75% of the general fund budget is comprised of personnel expenses, which includes wages, payroll taxes, medical, dental, and life insurance, workers' compensation, and pension expense. 10% of the budget is for contractual items, including insurance, utility costs, training, and those types of items. If we dig a little further, we get some more details of the general fund budget. Personnel expenses are up 6.1% over the fiscal year 2025 budget. This is mostly attributed to an increase in pension contributions for police and fire personnel, as recommended by the city's actuary and reviewed by the city council last September. This is to comply with mandates from the state regarding pension contributions and pension benefits. In addition, the budget includes a recommendation to add a part-time fire prevention inspector. I would note that this is a position that was requested last fiscal year, but we did not include it in the budget last year. We waited a year to make sure that it was truly something that was needed and warranted, so I am recommending inclusion in this year's budget. The responsibility of this position would be to support the strategic plan, the ISO and accreditation goals by expanding the fire inspection program. And then, lastly, there is a slight increase, a result of the increase for incoming elected officials, compensation pursuant to Ordinance 2024-33, passed by the corporate authorities on August 19th, 2024, and effective for May 2025. I would note that there was a request for a second GIS technician. We currently have a GIS coordinator and a GIS technician. That would have been partially funded by the general fund, and at this time, that is not being recommended for inclusion in the fiscal year '26 budget. This slide shows that the contractual expenses in the general fund are down 25.85% over the fiscal year '25 budget. This is attributable to the $1 million that was budgeted from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds. And as mentioned earlier, in fiscal year '25, the city provided grants funded through ARPA to assist with exterior and interior renovations for commercial properties for economic development purposes. ARPA funds needed to be encumbered by December 31st, 2024, and will need to be expended by the city no later than December 31st, 2026. While the ARPA grants have expired, the budget contemplates a new Experience Geneva Grant Program, with the final details still being worked out, but the dollars budgeted are budgeted for assistance with historic preservation and adaptive reuse for commercial historic buildings. And lastly, in the general fund, this slide shows that the other category is up 45.3%. As discussed on an earlier slide, the other category includes everything that wasn't included in personnel, contractual, or commodities, so in this case, it includes inter-fund transfers. For fiscal year '26, the proposed budget includes an increase of nearly $800,000 in transfers out of the general fund to the General Capital Projects Fund and the Capital Equipment Fund. Later in this presentation, I will describe in more detail the expenditures in those So, our next major fund is the electric fund. Similar to the general fund slide, this slide represents revenues on the left and expenditures by function on the right. The majority of revenue is derived from the sale of electricity. Similarly, the largest expenditure is the purchase of power, with capital expenditures the second-largest planned expenditure. So, again, you can see capital expenditures were estimating to be $15 million next year. Electric sales are $35 million, and then we purchased $30 million. That offsets that, or vice versa. So, this breaks down the budget into functional categories, and in this instance, 8% of the electric budget is attributed to personnel, whereas 59% is attributed to contractual For fiscal year '26, contractual services are proposed to increase 18%. This is attributable to a $4.2 million increase in electrical purchases. The PJM capacity clearing price increased from 34.13 megawatt per megawatt hour to 269.92 on June 1st. This is the amount the electric utility pays to have generation capacity available for our use. These charges are direct pass-through to ratepayers. The fiscal 2026 budget also includes a decrease in capital expenditures related to the completion of improvements that have been made in the current year for the southeast master plan And our last major fund is the water/wastewater fund. Again, the pie chart on the left is related to the revenue, and the chart on the right to expenditures. In the proposed fiscal year '26 budget, other financing is the largest source of revenue. This is the anticipation of approximately $12 million in an IEPa loan and the use of $4.5 million of fund balance. On the expenditure side, capital expenditures make up 55% of expenditures. So, by now, you should understand and recognize this chart. 55% of the budget is comprised of capital expenditures, and 13% is personnel expenses. The capital investment planned for fiscal year '26 is 35.9% more than in fiscal year '25. This includes the planned sanitary sewer river crossing that was budgeted in fiscal year 2025, but it also includes $3.6 million in water main infrastructure replacement for older water mains and lead services. It is anticipated that somewhere between 130 and 150 services are to be replaced either through capital projects or under the city's reimbursement program. The recommended budget also includes the addition of an environmental compliance coordinator, a position that was requested in fiscal year '25 but not recommended at that time. This position will be at the wastewater treatment plant and will be responsible for tasks related to unfunded mandates, and includes tasks that are compliance testing, documentation, and reporting requirements. We also believe that the addition of this position is anticipated to reduce consulting services related to these specific functions. The city includes capital expenditures in 11 different funds, but there are three main funds that are solely for capital expenditures: General Capital Projects Fund, the Infrastructure Capital Projects Fund, and the Capital Equipment Fund. Page 37 in this evening's agenda packet lists all of the capital improvement programs by fund. The General Capital Projects Fund totals $1.4 million in expenditures, including $600,000 for facility-related improvements, $400,000 to assist with consolidating and updating the city's many planning documents, including the Comprehensive Plan, the Affordable Housing Plan, the BikeWay Implementation Plan, the Downtown Station Area Master Plan, the Southeast Master Plan, and the Historic and the historic preservation plan into one truly comprehensive plan while simultaneously updating the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to provide clear guidance for the future growth, enhancement, and preservation of the community. There is also $350,000 budgeted for replacement of the South First Street retaining wall. The Infrastructure Capital Fund is funded primarily from the half-percent non-home rule sales tax that is restricted to infrastructure projects and use of fund balance. Annual programs, for example, the sidewalk improvements in the street program, make up 38% of contemplated expenditures. Of note for fiscal year 26 is $1.8 million budgeted for the East State Street Bridge railing replacement. Not only is this for the railing, but the project will also widen the sidewalks on the bridge and allow bike and pedestrian traffic to flow more easily. There is an additional $1.3 million for the East State Street Road Reconstruction Project. The reconstruction and widening will enhance economic redevelopment of this corridor, provide a gateway experience for westbound motorists, addition of a dedicated bike trail providing connectivity to the Fox River Trail, to eastern bike trails, modernize the underground infrastructure systems, installation of LED street and roadway lights, and complete reconstruction of the roadway surface. It should be further noted that an additional $1.4 million in the TIF II and $1.2 million in the TIF III funds are budgeted for this project. As many are aware, this project has been in the works since 2005. Not a typo, not a misstatement. Based upon our most recent conversations, and actually paperwork I signed this evening, the Illinois Department of Transportation, this project will be let in March with construction commencing late spring, early summer. And then lastly, the Capital Equipment Fund receives the bulk of its revenue from a transfer from the general fund. For fiscal year 25, it is anticipated that the majority, or 69%, of this budget anticipates expenditures for vehicles. This continues to be the result of delayed purchases due to supply chain issues. As such, the recommended budget includes funding for purchases anticipated to have occurred previous years and additional purchases in fiscal year 26. As indicated, tonight's presentation is meant to give an introduction to the proposed 26 budget with the forecasted 27 budget contained online. The line item detail for each fund is available on the city's website with links provided in tonight's packet. When you look at the city's total fiscal year 2026 budget, of which there are 37 different funds, operating expenses, including, not, everything not including capital or personnel expenses, represents 41.4% of all expenses. Capital projects represent 35.6%, and personnel expenses, which are wages and benefits, make up 22.9% of the city's total budget. So here's a representation of all 37 funds. The fiscal year 2026 recommended budget anticipates total expenditures in the amount of $140.6 million, and the forecast for 2027 is $143.4 million, similar to the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. So the budget is a planning document outlining anticipated maximum expenditures. The budget presented to you this evening is a balanced budget where in all funds, expenditures are less than, equal to, or greater than the anticipated, I mean, excuse me, all expenditures are less than or equal to anticipated revenue, including the planned use of fund balance where appropriate. The city's positive financial position is anticipated to remain stable throughout the current fiscal year and beyond due to our continued responsible approach to budgeting and forecasting. As stated, the proposed budget presented this evening is available on the city's website. In addition, we will set time aside at the next committee of the whole meeting to provide the city council with additional time for discussion and review. A special committee of the whole meeting may also be scheduled for January 27th, if desired by the city council. And then lastly, on February 3rd, at the city council meeting, there will be a public hearing on the budget, and the city council will be asked to consider and improve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 budget the same evening. We recognize that a lot of information was presented, not only here in the presentation, but also in the packet. I would encourage each of you to take some time to review the information and submit any questions in writing to me. And any questions that are submitted by noon each Friday will be posted with the responses to the city's website by the following Monday afternoon. I would like to close out the presentation by thanking those who helped put the budget and presentation together for your consideration. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank our senior management team and their respective staff for working together to provide a fiscally sound budget for your review and consideration, most of whom are seated behind me on the groom's side of the room. And then through the efforts of all, we're able to present to you a balanced budget that represents the values stated in the strategic plan and best serves the citizens of this community. Second, I want to give a special thanks to our administrative analyst in the finance department, Ronald Manuel, for his assistance in creating the graphics and slides in the "A Look Back by the Numbers." Had I done that, you may have never seen it. Ronald was able to do it in a day and a half. So thank you, Ronald. And lastly, I do want to thank the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee and the city council for their participation in setting priorities for the next fiscal year and beyond. So again, I thank you for your time this evening, your leadership, and your support. I return the floor to the mayor to entertain any general questions or comments. And then that's it.
I believe the city administrator is going to take her seat to address such questions and/or comments. The floor is open to the council. Anyone wishing to ask the city administrator, or would you prefer all questions directed to you, Ms. Dawkins, or would we like to invite our department heads to also respond?
I guess it depends what the question is.
There you go. That's a nice evasive answer. I like that. That's good. Questions, comments from the deus? Alderperson Bruno.
Just wanted to extend my thanks to Stephanie and all the staff. This is my last budget, and I've always been impressed with the work that goes into it and the results. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you. Stephanie, I had some specific questions on some items, and my question is, what is the process? And how would you like to see this go forward? Would you like them submitted? They'll be posted on Friday, and then we'll discuss them on Tuesday next week.
So submit them by Friday. They'll be posted by Monday of each week. And then the next time would be Tuesday, the 21st, is our next committee of the whole meeting. So if you would like further discussion on those questions or any questions that have been submitted that next week, we would have those discussions then.
Okay. So my first batch of questions that I got in will be in the next?
Correct. They will be in the first posting of questions that have been submitted.
Very good.
I received some questions from you and also from other alderpersons, so we're combining those now.
And then if we want to make any changes or have suggestions and want to make a proposal, would that be next Tuesday at that meeting?
That would be, oh yeah, it is next Tuesday. Sorry, I'm a week off. Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
At the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, for everybody's understanding, this is the proposed budget. Anything can change, anything based on conversations with you all. You make those recommendations, vet it through your counterparts. And then that's also why next Tuesday, we would determine at that date whether you wanted yet another meeting before the public hearing on the 3rd.
Thank you. And just to clarify for everyone's benefit, Monday is a observed holiday in the city of Geneva, so all answers to questions will be posted on Tuesday. So alderperson mayor.
Couple of specific questions about the presentation. On page three, you said 4.2 million savings and capacity charges by GGF performance in the summer? Anybody here explain that?
I can try, but I think Rich is probably better suited, so. New grandpa Babica, if you don't mind coming out.
There you go. Congratulations. So before you answer that question, share with us the good news.
Our daughter gave birth to a baby girl, nine pounds, on Sunday.
Fantastic.
So.
How you doing?
We're waiting patiently and exasperation to actually see our granddaughter for the first time. So yeah, this is a legitimate smile. See, I actually can't smile.
Is there a name?
Gracie Ray.
Gracie Ray?
So Ray is our daughter's middle name. And so born at St. Alexian on Barrington Road up in Hoffman Estates. That poor kid. I'll just leave it at that, what she went through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's amazing, and it's just, you look back 35 years, and you're like, wow, I forgot what that's like, how emotions. Yeah, it's pretty intense.
It is.
I told my staff today, I was like, you can ask anything you want today. You're probably going to get it because I'm. Today's the day. Nobody took me up on it, so they're good people.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. So regarding to your question, the 4.2 million in savings, which appears to be washed by the 4.2 million in capacity charges, two completely unrelated revenues, and it's not necessarily a revenue. If you look inside the budget, you're not going to see 4.2 million in revenue. But when we run GGF, the Geneva Generating Facility, very short version, is, it's very similar on a macro scale of solar on your house. So if you have solar on your house, and it reduces your energy consumption behind the meter. So you get a credit. Aaron's going to kill me tomorrow about simplifying it to this much, but that's basically what GGF does also. On high-capacity days, we run GGF to reduce our demand on the PJN system. Our capacity. I can literally feel him saying capacity right now. And what that does then, because we're showing a lesser need for capacity on those high-index days, we don't get charged as much. So there's actually four days, it's hard to believe, but there are literally four days that we target throughout the year, and we don't know when those days are till after the day has passed. So our consultants do a really good job about telling us when it's going to run. It can also actually run as a revenue generator when it clears the market, but the 4.2 million is to reduce those capacity charges from PJM on those high-index days. Now, the additional expenses that we're projecting for next year. Yeah. So PJM basically conducts an auction for capacity charges a year in advance, and those go into effect in June. That auction was, I believe, in November. And as Stephanie's presentation calls out, it goes from $38, 34 megawatt to.
$2.50.
Yeah. That's an incredible jump in capacity charges. There's a number of reasons why that is. It can be due to the retirement of stable load platforms such as natural gas plants, coal-fired plants throughout the whole PJM market. And the PJM market, just for reference, is called the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland market. That's where it started, but basically it covers everything from the Mississippi River east to the Atlantic, and then from roughly just south of St. Louis into Canada. So that's what the PJM market is. There's a lot of demand, a lot of rise in data centers, which are just incredible consumers of electricity. And so between the rise in demand for those data centers, the retirement of fixed assets, it's supply and demand on a large scale and not in our favor in this instance.
Yeah, it seems like it. So it's only regarding the capacity, not the usage? Is that what Aaron would want you to say?
Correct. Our demand is actually stable to decreasing throughout the system. Now, there's going to be some variables as SEM starts coming online, General Mills coming online. There's a lot of industry that's still coming online, but good thing and bad thing. You know, we have energy conservation that's in effect, both on, we do it internally with VFDs at our treatment plants and utilities. Manufacturers are doing the same thing, conversions to LED lights. So there, our load for the utility is stable to slightly decreasing on an annual basis, which is why we need to grow.
But these two things washing each other out, that means that we set the rates correctly still?
There is no washing. I apologize for cutting you off.
So the rate increases that we passed are still okay even with this increase and decrease?
The rate increases that were adopted late last year were for the capital expansion for the additional substations. Where this is going to be reflected is in the PCA, Power Cost Adjustment. I'm looking at Reed House. That's an automatic increase or decrease? Yeah, it goes to all our customers. And that gets established by, we just pass that through, we get it from PJM. It's based out and out through our customers. So your rates don't change. Your base rates are not changing. That just gets reflected in that PCA.
Okay. So will individual bills change based on that? Because it seemed like a pretty dramatic increase in one metric of the formulas that go behind the rates. And it's just kind of like, how much are our electric rates going to go up based on that?
There's a lot of smart people that are doing a lot of white papers that are making projections, but nothing has been established yet, and I think it would be premature for either myself or the electric superintendent to make that determination at this time. There is going to be some adjustment through the PCA, and we're all going to experience that, not just Geneva, Combed, Batavia, St. Charles, Naperville. Everybody in the PJM market, New York City, is going to feel that increase for next year.
Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for? Any other questions for Grandpa Babica? Oh, yes. Alderperson Ruby.
Thank you. I have, I think, an easy one for you. I'm curious about the bike lane markings. So just, for example, Eastside Drive, they just spray painted the bikes on the road. Not, I expected it to be on the shoulder, although people park there. I'm just curious, like, what exactly does that signify?
What you're referring to are basically the bicycle symbol with the arrows?
Yes.
They're referred to as sheros, share the road.
Okay.
And that is a relatively straightforward opportunity for the city or for any agency to really mark out where the designated bike lanes are. Eastside Drive is kind of interesting because it shares the road up to about Geneva Drive, and then we have a much wider combined-use path that then becomes the bike lane.
But even where we have the full, like, four lanes, it's still on the road. So, and it's kind of, I mean, if a bike were where the marker is, it would definitely be run over. Is it just like to create awareness of motorists?
It's to create awareness for the motoring public as well as to provide guidance to the bicyclists as to what the route is. Not necessarily where the bike lane is. There is not a designated bike lane there.
Okay.
It is, this is the route you need to take to get to the next connecting piece that's going to eventually get you to the Fox River Trail spur, which is then going to get you to the Fox River Trail or to West Chicago.
Okay.
So it's a guidance marker.
Okay, but it's not currently complete to the Fox River Trail?
Eastside Drive was marked up to its junction at, now DeBryan's going to be upset with me tomorrow because I can't remember the cross street where it hit. Then eventually goes along the north side of Good Templar Park and then intersects with the trail that runs on the east side of the Oak Hill Cemetery, where it then becomes a designated path. So you are correct. It hasn't been marked everywhere. We do have a reconstituted bike committee, which is looking at that, updating that plan as well as updating the routes. And we are continuing to incorporate those recommendations into the annual pavement marking program.
Okay, yep. I was just a little confused by the placement and the chunk of it, so thank you.
Alderperson Kilburg.
Rich, congratulations.
Thank you.
Could you give us another timeline as it relates to the East State Street project? I know it was. I know it was referenced during Stephanie's presentation. Could you just, I mean, I know everything is subject to change, but could you share with us the timeline as it relates now for the six, first six months of 2025?
Sure.
How it might fold, or how it might play out?
So as the city administrator referred to, the project's going out to bid in March. That will be advertised through the iDOT bulletin for 30 days. iDOT will award the contract, probably, I would assume, somewhere in early April. The city will then ratify that selection. We have no say in it, but we still have to say we're good with that selection. And then the project will begin basically as soon as weather conditions will allow on or about May 1st, and that's not just because that's when our fiscal calendar is, because the state runs on a calendar fiscal. So the project will then continue until weather conditions prohibit and force the project to shut down. It is anticipated to be at least a two-year construction project. The first general phase is the west, eastbound lanes will be closed to traffic and then removed. We're preparing a huge communication plan. So Kate Starr, our communications coordinator, director of economic development, Kathleen and myself and a city engineer, and consultants are all working to really step up our communication plan for this project. The eastbound lanes, once they're shut down for traffic, they'll be removed, and that's where the majority of the new infrastructure goes in, the new water main, the new sanitary, the new storm system. AT&amp;T will have their utilities relocated through there, Nycor. So everything is basically going to get pushed back onto the, where the eastbound lanes are. And then once all the utilities have been approved, then that road will be reconstructed, and then the westbound lanes will be removed. The westbound theoretically should go proceed quicker because it's simply more of a removal of the roadway itself, but the bike lane will be on the east side along with the eastbound lanes on the south side of the road. All the traffic signals, there's going to be lots of work and lots of congestion, and we will be encouraging people early and often to find alternate routes. The good news is, is that we're not going to start our project till after St. Charles reopens Route 25 with a culvert closure in March and April. So...
That's helpful. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? Yes, alderperson Bowery.
This isn't for you, Rich, but congratulations.
Thank you. I was going to say, there's five other department heads.
I just wanted to thank Stephanie and all of the department heads that are here and all of their staff that I know contribute also to this process, this whole process. I was fortunate enough to get to attend a number of meetings with department heads in December. Unfortunately, couldn't attend all of them, but I found all of the ones I was able to attend super informative and helpful, and I look forward to getting to spend more time going through all of this in the next few weeks. But I just wanted to thank all of you for really thoughtful contributions and to Stephanie for helping shepherd all of this and explain everything to me, ask questions, or else. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Rich, we've taken a collection from the council to buy away PJM's storybook for Gracie Ray, so that'll be coming shortly.
It does help you fall asleep, and I...
Yes, I bet it does. Anyone else? There is no action to be taken tonight. This is a presentation. No objection. We'll move on to item three, public comment. Is there anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address the city council on matters important to you or you feel are important to us? If so, the floor is yours. It's your turn to speak, our turn to listen.
Just wanted to bring you all an update. We do have restaurant week coming up here in Geneva, starting this coming Saturday. It is dine on the nines, so as a result, our week is nine days long. Our specials are all based off of something on the nines, so $9, $19, $29, et cetera. We have two additional participants. We have 22 restaurants in town and seven of which are participating in fundraising to the Northern Illinois Food Bank. So I welcome all of you to come out, participate with the restaurants, take advantage of it, and help support a wonderful cause, trying to take care of those that are in need in our community. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? New business. The dais is wide open to any council member wishes to share anything with all of us. We will wait 10 minutes. Yes, so...
Stephanie, I know you sent out, I don't know what to say, but the comments after we passed the ordinance now, those rules take effect, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Knowing that, I do know when we've had referendums before that the council has been asked to help run some, do some of those events when we have public ones. Will you be asking for that, putting out a schedule?
Yes. I don't have the schedule yet. I'm actually, was waiting till after this evening to ensure that in fact you all are going to go to referendum. I have a call with the consultants tomorrow afternoon, and that will lay out kind of our next steps.
Okay. And you referenced in there, there is a PAC fund that's going to be set up for this then, or?
I don't, I don't know any of that yet.
Okay, because I saw the PAC, but I mean, there will be, I'll ask that question after you find that out. That's probably better because I'd get into the weeds when you don't have all the answers. So, thank you. No, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, no matter what. So I've been through this before with the sales tax, and there's a lot of work that's going to be happening in the next couple of months, I think, too. So, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Casaroff gets the motion, all in favor, to adjourn the meeting. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.